Planning and zoning commission to order. We will start with roll call. Brooks?
President.
Chuck?
President.
Brian?
President.
Thomas?
President.
Alyssa?
Chair.
Rob?
Chair.
We have a quorum, all parties. I will now, item number three, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, approval of minutes of the November 3rd, 2022 regular meeting. Better hurry up or Thomas is taking over. Motion in second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, public comments. This is where you can address the commission on anything you would like. If you are part of the agenda, we will get to you. Otherwise, anybody have anything?
So regarding the potential rezone of that on Redwood to apartments, we did receive a letter. She wanted it distributed to both the council and P&amp;Z. You all have that in front of you, then council will have it on Monday. But I just wanted to provide it to you all, so you have it. So you have received comments.
Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to item number six, a home occupation permit for 817 East Magnolia Drive. Let's see, is Carl here? Carl Olson? Carl, are you related to Carl?
I'm his girlfriend.
Okay. Okay. Would you like to come up and tell us what you'd like, please? If you could push the button on that... Should say push to talk, just push it and give us your name and num, address.
Up here?
Nope.
It's the rightish button.
Right on the bottom. There it is.
Okay.
Perfect. Name and address, please.
Name is Deanne Wiley. Address 817 Magnolia Drive, Brandon.
Okay, and what would you like to do? It says here, designing clay and tile hobby.
It is strictly a hobby. It's not my business. I did do it in California for 10 years and recently moved here. And I just want to continue my hobby, but not as a business. There is nobody coming to my house. It's just a shed to put my clay in and do my artwork. I'm also a painter. I do paintings and stuff. And a place to store my stuff from California. There is no website. I never had a website for a ceramic.
Okay. Can you turn your mic on, please? Sorry about that.
Before we move forward, is this even a home occupation? It's not a business.
Great question for our staff. Staff?
Well, I know we've talked to with this applicant over the several months and we get the impression, but the staff members probably understood at the very beginning that it was a business, that there'd be some selling of the product. So if it's evolved and it's not going to be any kind of selling, then potentially we would not need to go through this. But you know, these things are evolving. And I think the applicant learned a lot when we first looked at the project and what could be done and how big the shed was going to be. So they may have changed their game plan or their strategy or business strategy, so.
So we thought the size could be larger than what it was. So we understood through Paul that it can't be any larger than 200 square feet. So we did, we just brought it down. That was no big deal. And so I just want a place to go to my hobby. There's no place in my, in the house that I'm at. The rooms are... No place for me. I don't want to put clay into the house and get clay everywhere. So it's just a place for me to do my artwork that I enjoy doing. That's all it is. And I wouldn't be selling it out of the house. If I was to sell, it was to go to a farmer's market or anything like that. But I have no plans for that because I did start working through the school district at the intermediate school. And so that takes up most of my time. But that's all it is, really. Just a shed in the backyard for hobby and put my, storage my stuff from California.
Okay, so this, this then would, I would ask for Brian's question. Why do we need a conditional use if she's just building a lawn shed? Because people do that all the time.
Right.
Yep. So then, I mean, if we, if we deny the conditional use, she can certainly still build a lawn shed, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Right? If we allow for the conditional use, well, she'll still build lawn sheds. So I don't know.
It will house my lawnmower.
Well, we-
There are photographs that were taken of the rear yard with a lot of pallets and things.
Yes.
So this may be a good opportunity to find out from the applicant what their intentions are with all these wood pallets.
Right.
May or not be related whatsoever.
Yep, so, yeah.
The wood pallets is a new idea. We thought we were going to build it ourselves and we had gone online where people have built sheds out of wood pallets. And since wood is so expensive now. And we were able to get the wood pallets from free from a company here in Brandon. And we pick them up ourselves and that's where... In fact, it'd be more structurally sound than it would if we were just to go buy a shed at Lowe's or wherever. So it's just a project that we're building ourselves and it would all be up to code, whatever you guys feel is, you know, suitable.
Okay.
And the roof will match the roof of the house and the side will match the siding on the house. So it wouldn't be obscene. It would, it would look really nice.
Does that answer that question, Paul?
It'd have two big doors to get my lawnmower in and out and some of my stuff that I'm storing.
Okay.
Yeah, any lawn shed over 150 square feet would have to be similar materials to the siding and roofing, so.
So you would have to have same siding, same roof.
Right.
We also, you would need to go to the city and get a permit for your lawn shed.
Okay.
Right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And does anybody that builds a lawn shed, do they do the same? It is a requirement?
They are supposed to.
Oh, they're supposed to? Okay. Okay. So and that's not a problem to do any of that.
So then I guess my, my question would be, do, do we proceed with the conditional use hearing? I mean, we can't withdraw it because we didn't submit it. Does that make sense?
If the board is determined by the applicant that there's not going to be a business venture...
Now, there can't be a business in there.
No, it would be no business.
Right.
It's just my hobby.
So if there's an open sign or people lined up to buy tiles out of your back yard?
I would never bring anybody to the house or I don't want any strangers at my house in the first place. So no, it's just a place for me to do my work. I even have pictures to show you what I do. It's just a place to go for me to do my work.
You're from California?
I am.
It's going to get cold soon.
That was my question.
I'm already feeling it, yeah. I'm feeling it, yeah. I actually like it.
Yes, Alyssa?
My question is, do you plan to heat it or plumb it? You gonna have running water?
No, there's, there'll be no running water.
With clay, really?
No, it's not a, it's not a big production. I just, I sit there at the table and I do my work.
I used to do clay and we got really dirty in there.
Well, I have a tub of water I'll bring in because I don't want any of that water to go down a sewer system or anything like that if it has clay in it. So it's not good for that. So I just bring in a bucket of water and that's all I use.
Sive it and keep it.
I don't have a wheel or anything like that. I sit at my table and-
You just slap?
Do slap, yes.
I'd love to.
We'll cover the finer arts of pottery making later. So I think we either deny the conditional use, approve the conditional use, or the applicant can withdraw the conditional use. Is that correct?
Correct.
So would you like to withdraw your conditional use application? Here's the thing.
Oh, but I still get my shed?
You have to get a permit for your shed, yes. You're not allowed to conduct business in your backyard.
Right.
But yes, you, you just would, you would get a building permit for a shed then. If you're not conducting business out of it, then the, the use for us to pass a conditional use seems to be not a point. Like we're not approving anything.
Right.
So you, you have the ability then just withdraw your application.
I'll just withdraw it then and just get my permit to build the shed.
Is that good for you guys? Okay. Well, there you go.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks.
We didn't even have to vote. We got one off the table.
No, that was nice.
All right. Now, we will... I will take a motion to adjourn the planning and zoning.
So move second.
Motion in second to adjourn planning and zoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I will call to order the board of adjustments. Roll call, we are all still here. I would take a motion to approve the agenda for board of adjustments.
So move second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, as odd as this is, we ask for public comments again. Since everybody was making them the first time, I imagine there will be a whole lot more this time. Hearing none. Item number 11, a variance application for 708 North Aggett Avenue. Let's go to 15. Ryan?
Yes.
Come on up, man. You're up. State your name and address if you could and then tell us what you would like.
Ryan Shigley, 708 North Aggett Avenue, here in Brandon. So I am applying for variance on the fence that I'm installing around my home.
Okay.
I got a permit, 727 of 21, to replace a chain link fence with a solid construction mixed material. Corrugated steel on bottom, open slats on top.
Okay.
The permit was issued by the city. According to my plans that I had submitted, I began construction. And then I didn't find out until the 5th of October this year that apparently I was building it not the way the city thought I was. I mean, I was building it the way I submitted the plans. My plans were approved, so I was building it. So Paul told me I could submit a variance application because at this point I'm 90% done with the project. It's taken me over a year to get this far. I really don't want to pull it down. I was just having an issue that it was approved by the city. I was building it the way it was approved. There was no clarification on what smooth side out meant for over a year. Now that I'm almost done, you want me to tear it down and redo it?
Okay. Let's start with the commission first. You got any questions for the applicant?
I'd like to hear the staff's side of the story.
Okay.
I'll start before Paul, just for clarification for the board. At the time, the fence was started and the permit was granted, there were no material requirements in the zoning ordinance. So that's not the subject of the variance. The subject of the variance is the, the post being on the outside rather than the inside of the fence. So just for clarification.
Do, do we, did we ever specify the side that the post should be on? Like we always have said, the smooth side of the fence should be out. But we, I mean, we normally refer to the framing of a fence should be on the inside of the fence, not the outside.
Well, the applicant put all works to Plow City, a Brandon ordinance, titled 15. I spoke with the owner. He said the smooth side to the fence would be on the outside.
Okay.
He clearly stated that. And I've been here nine years. I've never had anybody that misunderstood what it meant to say post on the outside and the materials on the inside. So I watched the project progress and at a certain point I realized that it was not going to go to the fence regulations relative to the applicant and advised him that those corrections needed to be made before we had to do a follow inspection. And that's when the applicant asked for a variance. It would be, as he, you know, he's too far along to make those adjustments or want to make those adjustments. But the staff approved it with the understanding that the building materials would be smooth on the outside. You have pictures in your packet that clearly show that the structural supports on the outside, so.
So just for reference for planning and zoning, 1514-6J reads, "The side of the fence considered being the face facing as applied to the fence post shall face abutting proper."
Okay. Joining to the fence post.
So it, it seems to me like we're hearing a variance request on differences of opinions between staff and the applicant. And in my mind, this doesn't mean what we're supposed to be reviewing for hardships. It pertains to the lay of the land, not which way the material's facing or not.
I got a few questions.
Shoot, turn your mic on, please.
For the applicant. So I assume this addendum one that we see in our packet on page 16, that was prepared by you yourself?
Yes, it was.
So can you please explain these two items? Number one, the hardship, 80% of the work complete. According to the construction detail approved by the city of Brandon before clarification on what smooth side out. Did you ever ask what that term meant?
No.
Okay. So I think as Mr. Clark mentioned, we, he's never had that questioned by any other contractor or homeowner. You mentioned earlier and you also mentioned in addendum item number two that the fence was, well, actually you're contradicting your comments here. In your addendum, you say the fence was designed with the steel pinched between the posts.
It is. That's exactly how it was.
Let's back up here.
Okay.
Fence was designed with the steel pinched between the posts and cross rails primary for structural integrity. As I see in the pictures, the steel is applied to the face of the post, not pinched between the posts.
That would be incorrect.
It's also not, it is also not constructed as you submitted. As you submitted, you had horizontal structural, structural elements between the posts of which the fence was applied to the, the two by fours horizontal. So in my mind, no, it's not constructed as you submitted.
I do have pictures of what it currently looks like.
Page 18 is the sketch that you submitted for a building permit, correct? On that sketch, it shows a top two by four. It shows two intermediate two by fours connecting between the posts and then a ground contact two by four of which the fencing is applied to. The fencing starts and stops on either side of the posts. However, in the pictures that are in our application or in our packet here, the fencing goes continuous. It doesn't start and stop at the posts. Pinched between the posts.
So from the outside, yes, it does look like it's continuous. From the inside, it is built exactly how I submitted these plans. Can I, can I-
Can you send us a, can you pass that picture around? In this picture, it looks like it's applied basically to the inside face of the railroad ties.
So exterior or from what my neighbors would see. The post is visible, you see a sheet of metal. It's all they see. It's not complete because I don't have those cedar posts on the inside. This will be the post, the steel is pinched between the cross rails as described and the post.
Or cross rails, pinched between the cross rail.
Cross rails of course.
Yeah, that's...
So this is what it looks like from-
That is what my neighbors see.
That's what your neighbors see and this is what you see.
That's what I see.
Yeah, I'm looking at this one.
I guess I'm not, I'm not agreeing with the argument.
I will tell you that this is not done like most fences I've ever seen.
I agree.
Now, what I, what I say by that is that normally the two by fours are attached to the posts.
It is attached to the posts.
But in between the posts, from here inside. And the drawing that you've submitted here, it appears as though they are attached from post to post. And then this would be attached on the face of that between the posts. Does that make any?
I can see what you're saying.
We'll have our architect draw a picture.
This, this picture here, this is your, what you submitted to the-
Correct.
Okay, so is this as you look at it from your yard or is this as you look at it from your neighbors?
This would be looking at it from the neighbors. This would be exterior steel. This is hidden behind steel. It's not showing what, if the steel was like that.
That's how I figured it out. That's how I interpreted it, yeah.
I don't see any physical features of the lot, the land, or anything that brings this before us that is a variance. To me, it's just a difference of opinion, so to speak, between staff and the applicant and...
So-
That's it.
Hmm. So basically, what, what you guys are saying is that this falls outside of the ordinance. Therefore, the variance would make it allowable outside of the ordinance. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's true.
So the reason that we're having a variance hearing is because you deemed this outside the ordinance.
Multiple staff members have looked at this.
Yep. And so you would like us to make a decision whether or not we agree?
That it was not built to the fence regulations of the city of Brandon.
Okay.
So as I see this, because it was installed incorrectly, it's not a hardship. You're still responsible for complying with the ordinance. Had you asked what that meant, Mr. Clark would have answered your question, what, what that meant. I think for everybody else at the table here, we're all under pretty consistent understanding of what that means.
My, again, I'm going back to this. I submitted these plans. They were approved. I built them how they were submitted and approved. I didn't feel there was any clarification needed.
I, I will tell you that if you submitted these plans to me, I would not have guessed that you built the fence that way.
Same way. That's why I questioned that it's not constructed the way you, you drew it.
Yep. As, as a person that used to be in construction, we also have a contractor up here and an architect, but every fence that I've ever seen has never been built like the one that you... Now, if you had cut the two by fours between the posts and mounted the metal between the posts on the outside, then that's a different, that's a different story. But you're running sheets all the way along the inside of the posts and then putting two by fours on the outside of those. And that, when I hear pinched between, I'm seeing two posts with a two by four that's cut between them. Not a, not a sheet that's run all the way behind them and then a two by four screwed into them to hold them in place. I don't know if that makes sense, but when I look at this drawing, having been around a lot of fences, I would not have guessed that you were going to build it the way you built it. That, that's just my two cents.
So, and we're not being argumentative here. There is a reason that fences are constructed that way. Because you have put the burden of maintenance on your neighbors. Because they now have to trail around each of those posts when they mow their lawn. Because I highly doubt that you're going to be able to go out and maintain that strip of, of grass out there without trespassing on your neighbor's lawn. And so that's the reason fences are constructed that way. I'm just, I'm just being honest and maybe a little harsh, but that's, there's reasons behind the way the ordinance is written, so. And that's one of those reasons. Because you put, you put the burden of maintenance on your neighbors now. And it's not just Brandon. Every, every city that I've ever worked in, they're all written the same way. Posts on the interior side, fencing material on the outside.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions or thoughts? Anyone?
Can we look at this drawing you did again? All right. See here, this, the, this, these cross hatches, right? Indicate the metal.
Right.
In your picture here, that ends there where the post is. It doesn't go, yeah.
I understand that's the portion now.
Right. Also, I want to ask, so is the fence, is the metal part on your lot line or is the, is, are the posts entirely within your lot line or is it the metal that's on your lot line?
I replaced the chain link fence that's set six inches inside property line. My posts filled the holes from posts I pulled out. Everything is inside my property.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Nothing, you know, property.
So if you were to redo this and just take each section and turn it around, the side that, or is, if you were, if you had to do that, is that how you would do it or would you do it a different way?
No, I would take the material down, put it on the other side.
You would put it on the other side? Okay. Yeah, because if you just took each section and did like this, then all the seams of those metal things would face out to your neighbors, right? Yeah.
So as an, as an example-
Yeah.
If you'll come up here.
Yes.
Yeah.
This wooden fence that's right here, in this picture. The posts are there, the framing is on the inside, the pickets are on the outside. That's normally what we talk about when we talk... So the picture that you showed right here, I would assume that this framing right here is between the posts on the inside and that this metal would be on the outside of those posts. So when I look at this picture, that's what I would think of. So they, they did approve it, the picture, but I would assume that it would look like that. Alyssa, do you have any other questions?
Uh, no.
Can you turn your mic off?
I'm sorry.
Does anybody else have any comments about this? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Shelby Shigley, 708 North Aggett Avenue in Brandon. Okay, my only, like, just hardship with this is it took a lot of effort to build the way it was built. Took a lot of effort to undo it and redo it. In that, we got a permit because we had to, to put a parking pad next to our house to put our trailer on. And that was a year ago when we got that permit. And the fence was pretty much 80% done at that time, too. And I don't know why it took a year to decide that it wasn't where it should have been. So I just don't, that's the one thing that I really have a hard time with. It was pretty much 80% done a year ago.
Okay.
When we got that permit. So everybody, so that means they were by having an issue with that trailer and they could have seen that the fence was not how it should have been a year ago, not all of a sudden right now.
Did you call and ask for an inspection of the fence?
No, since it wasn't like fully completed.
I'm not going to speak for Mr. Clark, but when an inspector comes out, they look at what, what they're there to look at. They're not going to look at everything in your house.
Well, we didn't ask them to come and look at it.
Okay.
Like when we got the note that it was wrong, we hadn't asked for an inspection or whatever, so.
But because, can I make a comment? Because a field inspector does not come out to a job site, doesn't mean that that's a reason to not- Because a field inspector does not come out to a job site, doesn't mean that that's a reason to not do what the regulations state. The inspector. And that's, that's my comment.
That's what I get.
Yes, sir.
Just because you're there doesn't mean you're looking at everything.
Anybody else have any comments? Come on up. If you just state your name and address, that would be fantastic.
Jerry Kirkold, 712 North Agate Avenue. Um, you're right about the railroad ties there, that on my side of the fence, there's a, grass and weeds grew up between those railroad ties, because I'm not cleaning that out. And it's not getting cleaned out during the summertime when I mow the lawn. Uh, one other thing is that I bought my house in 2012. Uh, Quentin, and I forget his last name, but he was the, in that house at the time, he was the original owner. And at that time, he was a sergeant on the Brandon Police Department. He told me that, uh, that this, his sprinklers were on my side of the fence. He had a, a three-foot-high, uh, chain-link fence. The sprink, his sprinkler heads were on my side of the fence. And he said the reason for that is that Brandon requires fences to be six inches within, inside the property line. Is that still true?
What the staff says is just inside. That could be an inch, six inches. But it cannot be around the property line, it must be just inside. That's just a judgment call. Six inches could be, it could be an inch, could be a foot.
Okay. So, my question then is, those posts for the chain-link fence, fence were, you know, probably two inches in diameter? Railroad ties are what, eight inches in diameter? So I'm wondering now if those railroad ties are now on my property? Has anybody checked that?
The applicant has not called for a file inspection. The reason this letter went out to the applicant was I could visually see that he's not meeting the regulations or they were not meeting the regulations.
Okay.
But we have not done an intensive onsite inspection for property pins.
Will that be done at the end?
The applicant would have to show us some property pins, the, the city does not go in and locate property pins. The applicant would have to provide that information as I go out there.
But he will provide that to you?
Yes, sir, my request.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Sir, we, there have been other, other projects in Brandon where the fence has been constructed on the wrong side of the property line and they have had to remove it and reconstruct it. So I think that probably makes you feel a little more comfortable if you're concerned about that.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion that we deny the request. A second.
Motion and second to deny the request. Any discussion? Alyssa?
Well, I'd just suggest if you end up redoing it, to make sure where the property line is before you start your work.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the request. Do you have anything? No?
After your motion.
Okay. Motion and second to deny the request. Hearing no other discussion. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, just a statement from staff. So when you constructed your fence, the materials were compliant with the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has since changed, so the materials are what we consider noncon, they're a non-conforming use. They're allowed to stay until something happens to destroy them. Should you decide to flip the metal onto the other side of the fence, if for some reason that is done more than fifty percent of the fence, you would not be able to put it back up because it's a non-conforming use, so just be careful with how you flip it. I wouldn't want you to end up in a situation where you couldn't, where you forced yourself to not be able to put it up by code. So if you want to talk about that further, feel free to give me a call or stop by and we can talk about what that means some more. I just don't want you to end up in a bad situation.
I think that's a little too late for that.
Okay, item number, well, actually, I will take a motion to adjourn the board of adjustments. Motion and second to adjourn the board of adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, now I will reconvene the planning and zoning commission with item number twelve, a discussion item, uh, the NB zoning district. Patrick, this is the draft, I would assume.
Correct. So, one thing to add to that is Tammy, Barb was there as well, so she can go into more that was talked about if I missed something. But on Tuesday, we held a development committee meeting. Generally, we bring together developers in town to provide their input. Usually, there's a topic, but sometimes it's just put out there so they can provide input because we hope things we have in our codes make sense for both a developer and a resident standpoint. So we like public feedback. Anyone that lives in the city can provide us feedback as well. This was particular developers. Their thoughts on the neighborhood business district was, they had a, a problem with the size, maximum building size. They did not feel that, as it is currently written, it is something they would utilize in the future. Most, their, I mean, to be blunt, their recommendation was kind of, planning and zoning should send it back as a rezone to general business and make, the council make a decision. Was their recommendation. Or, I'm just stating that, take it as you will.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on that? No?
Amy.
Go ahead. Charlie? Um, here's what I would say to that, Patrick. This is not a zone that is being developed for one lot in the city of Brandon or one parcel of land in the city of Brandon. I would also say that this is probably, uh, an idea that is way ahead of what most developers would say is a traditional or normal way of developing land. I do know I read an article that younger generation hates seeing seas of rooftops. They want to have a walkable neighborhood, they want to have things to do. They don't want to live within a sea of rooftops. So this zone was designed to get away from a sea of rooftops. Now, maybe current developers have absolutely no idea what that means, but maybe in ten or fifteen years, ones will come around who get it. How about that? Anybody else have anything? If not, would you like to make any changes to the ordinance? Or the zone, I should say.
When I was speaking with Mr. Reed today, the city administrator, we talked about ways to make this functional based on, in light of the development committee's comments. One thought that we talked about was if you increase the exterior setback and either eliminate the maximum building size or leave it as a percentage of the lot. And whether that is you increase the setback and you can allow a reduction if they have certain landscaping, if that's a way to implement zero scapeing perhaps. Or, we are open to your thoughts. The development committee, as I stated, was pretty opposed to the ten thousand square feet cap. So I'm, I'm just open to creative ideas.
I guess in my mind, if, if they want to put a ten thousand square foot footprint down, that they're okay with a fifty percent coverage, then you're talking a twenty thousand square foot lot, which is a pretty large lot to be in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And so I think the intent of what we've been talking about is more of a smaller residential scale and not a general business scale. Because that's what everybody's fearful of, is the big shopping malls, the, the big gas stations, the large retail. But yet, they want to have the, the small gift shops and more personal type of, of retail.
Shops, not stores.
Yeah, there you go. Better, better way to put it.
Shops, not stores.
More boutique-type retail.
And I think a neighborhood business district would be, uh, good for, when Brandon gets to the point where along these major roads, the residential, the residential that touches Holly, for example, gets turned into businesses. So you don't have to tear down the houses to build businesses. You can just put a little business in the house. Then neighborhood business would be good for that kind of thing, I think.
Yeah, I mean Louise is an example of what you're talking about, in Sioux Falls. Louise, south, south of the mall.
North Minnesota.
Yeah. Yeah, Minnesota Avenue, another, another example of that.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification for people on YouTube who are listening to this in the future. I'm, I'm not advocating the, the development committee's position, I'm just explaining what they talked about. So I'm not advocating one position or another, I'm just explaining the conversation that occurred.
You know, the, the counter to that, you know, I, I understand where the developers are coming at it. But yet, you know, over the past year, year and a half, we've also seen a lot of opposition from the residential side of Brandon. To commercial development and R2 and R3 development and so. Kind of gotta.
Yeah.
Keep both sides happy.
No, you make both sides mad.
Yeah.
There you go. If everybody's mad at you, we're doing our job right. I mean, it is a fine line we walk between residents not wanting anything built in their backyard and developers who want to take empty land and turn it into something. And we have to try to find that balance between those two things. That's another thing I believe that this district accomplishes, is a compromise. So, go ahead, Lee.
Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle. I attended that meeting as well with Tammy and Barb and Patrick and was involved in some of that discussion. One of the things that was brought up was the adjoining property, how big the church was. And that was not readily available, so I researched that in the, obviously, the next morning. And that has come back at sixteen thousand, um, one hundred and four. And I'm gonna hand that out here.
Lee, could you say that number again, please?
Yeah, it's, it's right here. This is the county sheet. Look up, and then the building, what that looks like in proportion to the lot. So the printed version there has got the church highlighted up at the top. And then it says main floor, sixteen thousand, one hundred and four. And then the other is a Google Earth picture of what that looks like, uh, in proportion to the residential, uh, thing. I guess what I'm trying to come up with a compromise, obviously, we've been in this together. TJ and I have sat with you guys as well and trying to figure out how this can work and that kind of thing. If there was some, like, maybe a compromise between, we originally started at twenty thousand. Um, now we're down to a ten thousand. If it's zone general business, it could be a hundred thousand square foot building. Um, maybe there's a compromise between that. Um, I'm gonna hand out another sheet. Uh, one of the permitted uses is a daycare. The building blocks daycare is currently nine thousand. And they have an adjoining gym next door to that. So if we envision a, a daycare from ten years ago to today, daycares are a lot different and it's not just a toy room and some beds. Obviously, there are gym activities, that kind of thing. It doesn't seem like a day like today is the best thing to have a nine thousand square foot building adjoined to a five thousand square foot gym and have to walk twenty foot in the cold without your snow boots or your coat to go back and forth. Just something to think about, but I'll hand that out now.
Building blocks, it's out in the west side.
This is over by Frontier?
No, it's on the west side, right off of Holly. Out by Sioux Valley Energy.
Just for the people that came in late, we're talking about the maximum building size.
As you can see, the county sheet there lists that nine thousand square foot. That's where, if you look on that little earth picture, it's got the, uh, right there underneath the address, building blocks. And then right to the right of that is their gym. See the setback there where you go to that? One of the permitted uses in NB was a daycare. That was acceptable. So if, I guess, where am I going with that? If there's a, somewhere in the middle of the church, five years, ten years or something was ever to be sold or up for sale, it could not be zoned NB because the church is too big to be in a ten thousand square foot. So you say, well, it'd have to be general business. Doesn't make sense to have an industrial park across the street to the north, then a three-lane truck route, then an NB, then a general business of the church of sixteen thousand. How that would work, how that would look. We want to compromise, try to work through with the neighbors just as well as everybody else. Obviously, we understand this is not written for us. We're trying to make this as generic as we can to, for the future of Brandon. Both TJ and I make our living off of Brandon.
Anybody have any thoughts on that? If the church were to go up for sale, what would it be zoned as? I mean, right now, it's zoned R1 and we allow for churches. So if it wasn't going to be a church, then what could it be in an R1 zone? Nothing. Very large house.
Another church.
Another church. A school. Can't be apartments, it's not zoned R3. It could be a house with a lot of roommates. Skirts the rules a little bit, but.
It might have to be R2 or R3 unless you got a big family.
Big family.
Little big family.
I got a hundred roommates.
Or you don't want to see each other.
That's right.
So, I just did a quick count. The church is thirty-two percent of the lot coverage. The, the church footprint, thirty-two percent of the lot. The, um, daycare, twenty-three percent. So, I, those, those are a little more comfortable to me, but, um.
Instead of fifty, are you talking?
Well, so maybe we do a compromise here. Maybe if we go over ten thousand, and, and I'm just throwing out a, a scenario. If we go over ten thousand, then maybe the lot coverage ratio changes. You know?
Okay.
You can go up to ten thousand and fifty percent coverage. If you go above, if you go above ten thousand, then maybe the, maybe the percentage of coverage goes down. To make it feel a little bit more like this church setting, this daycare setting, where there's more green space to buffer around that. I don't know, Lee, your thoughts on that?
I don't know, the ratio, the thing on the county that's actually eleven point two-four acres, where it says the lot size.
I just looked under.
On that.
It says characteristics and it says lot square foot.
Thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy.
So.
Thirty-nine, two-seventy.
I think if, see the church, let's call it our four-acre tract, probably was not subdivided off from the county when this is, you know what I mean, at this point, because it just happened. That makes sense?
So that one says forty-eight thousand.
You see the eleven thousand, two forty?
The church is sitting on eleven point two-four acres.
Yeah, the church, but I think in reality today, that's probably three point six-six less. See what I'm saying? Is it, is it, is it updated?
I'm on the GIS map, and it's split off from it now already. And it says eleven, eleven point two-four.
Okay.
Your property is three point six-six.
Yes, correct.
So, what do you think about Brian's suggestion? I guess my point is-
I get it.
If we want, if there's really that strong of a desire to have something larger than ten thousand, can we compromise and allow that, but reduce the density on a lot? And here again, you know, when you get to that much, you're gonna have, if it's retail, you're gonna have to have parking.
Correct. So it kinda corrects itself. Obviously, there's some flexibility in the shared parking concept that potentially could, you know, be applied there. I don't know that ratio. I guess, Brian, maybe that's in your profession a little bit to say, if I have a, a building and I, you know, I had a one acre, we'll use that as an example, and I need to use up a certain percentage for setbacks, a certain percentage for parking, that'll quickly allows me this much building. You know, I don't have enough experience to say, you know, it's a fourth, or it's a thirty-three percent, or whatever. You know what I mean? Would be left over for the building. So I wouldn't know that, I guess. Chuck, to answer your question, I don't know if, without, you know, doing the math. So if I took a one acre lot and we did thirty percent, an acre is forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty, correct? Forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty square feet. Thirty-three percent of that would be how much?
Fourteen, three seventy-five.
Fourteen thousand, three seventy-five, someone said. So, you know, in that scenario, if that is, now let's do twenty-three percent. What's twenty-three percent, wasn't that the number that you used, Brian, or something? What's twenty-three percent of forty-three, five sixty?
Ten thousand, eighteen.
Ten thousand, eighteen? Okay.
So fourteen, three seventy-five, I just divide it by three hundred. You're gonna make forty-eight parking stalls. So you take forty-eight times, um, ten times thirty-five, times three fifty. I mean, you're gonna make, you're gonna make sixteen, seventeen thousand just for, you know, parking lot.
Square feet.
So yeah, it is pretty much, you know, and then you add your setbacks in there. It's, it's gonna be about one-third of the parcel.
Okay.
Is that what, what was that what the parking requirement is for retail, one to three hundred?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. First of all, my brain has to recover. That's a lot of math for me. Good. God almighty. So I do understand what he's saying. If you want to have a building bigger, you should have to have a bigger lot. Essentially. And that seems to make sense to me. I don't know about you guys. It's up to you guys to discuss. You got any thoughts on that?
Throw it out there for discussion.
Well, here we are. Discuss.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna consider going bigger, I mean, then that's a reasonable accommodation, in my mind at least, to hopefully give a little more opportunity for a little more buffering. I understand there's a lot of things that'll go into that, like we just talked about parking and stuff. But at least generally would allow for more, a little less density on it. So I think something like that could be workable to-
Say, say again what something like that is.
A-
Two hundred and four now.
Sure.
What?
A, a larger, a larger lot with a larger building. If we were going to allow that, then I, I do like the accommodation of, to consider it, to have it with a smaller maximum percentage of building on that lot, too. So you'd have to have a bigger lot, you know, your lot size would have to go up more than your building size.
So the building size that you would allow would depend on how big the lot is?
Um, except for, we're allowing for ten thousand square feet. On a, we, we don't really have a coverage rule for the fif, ten thousand square feet. It has to meet setbacks. It has to meet parking requirements.
Right now, the language has a ten thousand square feet or fifty percent of the lot, whichever is less.
There you go. So we could, we could keep the ten thousand square feet with the setbacks, with the parking requirements. That would dictate that. If you want it bigger than ten thousand square feet, then we would have to come up with some number for lot coverage rule. So it can't be fifty percent. It would, because that, right, then it would have to be a number other than fifty, which would allow for more green space surrounding the building. So that they can't put a twenty thousand square foot building on a, right? So it does, um, it provides a little more, uh, maybe-
More elbow room.
A little more elbow room. And flexibility for the developer to maybe market the land, not just solely to this one, one thing. Does that make sense? But they could certainly then have the flexibility to, if they're gonna go bigger, then they have to give up more space.
So to say it a different way, the maximum building size that's written in the draft is ten thousand, and that requires a twenty thousand square foot lot, as it's currently drafted.
Yes.
To go bigger than that, you'd have to, yeah, if you wanted a fifteen thousand square foot lot. Make a different percentage.
In this particular case, how many square feet is the lot?
It would have to be, as it's drafted, a ten thousand square foot max building in our draft would need a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Correct. No, 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 there, well, there is nothing bigger because we're, we're considering allowing for a bigger building, but within, it would be, instead of a fifty percent coverage rule, it would be another number that we would determine. Judging by the church, if you look at that, what is that, thirty-two percent?
Actually, I did the math wrong on that.
Uh-oh.
So how many square feet was it again? Do you look up?
Oh, God.
The mains, sixteen, one hundred and four. Church is sixteen.
No, that's the building.
I thought that's what the question was, was how much is-
Okay, so he said it's eleven acres.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be like five percent, ten percent.
This may be a little restrictive. Hold on, we're doing math. When I say we, I mean him.
You're saying you still wouldn't want a building to be more than ten thousand square feet?
No.
No, you're not saying that?
If it is going to be, then the lot around it has to be bigger in comparison. Percentage-wise. You got a number yet?
Nope, I did enter it right. It is, it is thirty, thirty-two point eight nine percent.
Thirty-two percent.
So a third.
A third. Okay.
And that's to the north edge of where the parking lot is, right?
That should be right.
Yeah, just, the reason I bring it up, um, you know, I wasn't here to- Thank you. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I do see that there was two comments about people were concerned about the maximum building size. And I think, I think they were responding to that ten thousand number, correct?
I would assume so, yes. Yes.
I mean, we can, we can throw something out there and hopefully get some additional feedback. I mean, we got, we got the developers here giving us, you know, their, their thoughts, but I think until we put something on paper and let the public see it and respond to it.
Um, well, then it would, I mean, we would have to put out a number.
Yeah.
Right? Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please.
Don DeJager, I'm at 504 Mayberry. I wasn't present at the last meeting, but I do watch them on YouTube and talk with my neighbors. And I will speak for my neighbors that when we all, you guys made reference to the building with the marijuana grow facility. We kinda got the reference for ten thousand square feet as far as what size a building is. You know, we had discussed initially neighborhood business, talking about smaller shops, smaller businesses incorporating it in. My concern for caution is the fact that when you start saying fifty percent of a lot, and then a developer says, okay, I'm gonna buy two acres, I'm gonna buy an eighty thousand square foot, make a one lot and put a forty thousand square foot building, because I'm only, I'm within the fifty percent rule then. That completely goes away from neighborhood business. You know, if, based on like acres, forty-three thousand square feet, you guys come up with a rule, okay, you need fifty percent, you're allocating a twenty thousand square foot building, would follow in your rules.
No, we're not. We're saying ten thousand, and then if you go over ten, it's gonna be a different percentage.
It's not gonna be fifty.
Not fifty.
So not, you know-
It might be thirty, it might be thirty.
Because then my, okay, then my concern gets, you know, then you just join two lots together. Okay, now I got eighty thousand, you know, eighty thousand square feet to work with. I can go, you know, the bottom line is obviously the bigger the building, the less it looks like neighborhood business. You know, um, and we did, we, we've met, we've talked, we've discussed, and that's, you know, that's, initially, when you guys came up with a ten thousand square foot and looking at a ten thousand square foot building, that falls into what we feel is neighborhood business. You start pushing fifteen, twenty, it just doesn't look like it belongs there, so.
So the church that we discussed earlier is sixteen thousand square feet.
Yep.
And so the lot that it currently sits on, it occupies thirty percent of that lot.
And that, yep, and I understand that, you know, that's, that's a-
That's what we're discussing right now, whether or not, if you're gonna have over ten thousand square feet, then you have to give up more lot. Essentially. Like, we're not gonna operate at a fifty percent rule over that square footage.
Bigger the building, this less percentage they're allowed. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, boy.
Well, okay.
It's not thirty-two percent, it's three point two percent.
You're close.
It's point oh three two eight nine.
You'll never do my taxes, just so you know. Yes, Thomas?
I think that if we're gonna go over ten thousand feet, it should only be under a conditional use, or a variance, rather.
No variance. Conditional use.
No variance. Well, then we shouldn't go over ten thousand for each building. Because we talked about that a lot.
Over, over ten thousand by conditional use is what you would like to see, without any lot coverage rules?
Well, with all the lot coverage rules, but it still has to be, um-
By conditional use.
Yeah, something, we're setting up a limit here. We have the last few weeks of ten thousand square feet.
Yep.
And now we're talking about twenty thousand or-
Allowing for bigger.
Sixteen thousand.
Yep.
And I can see his point.
Okay.
We're starting to getting in some dark territory.
Welcome to-
That's a Walmart.
Yeah.
Welcome to zoning. Yes, sir.
Uh, TJ Barthman, ten sixteen South Nicholas. So again, trying to get back to that compromise, exactly what you just said, get some feed, we have got feedback. That was part of having the development meeting, getting some feedback. Although it turns out to be, it's not a compromise if nobody's gonna use it. And that's where we're struggling, is that if we've got the developers saying they're not, it, it's not, ten thousand ain't big enough. It's not gonna work. Then we're kinda back to where we started, and I guess, so this particular lot in our situation, um, to be neighborhood business, increasing that building size to fifteen thousand would make sense to me. We started at ten, we, we kinda ended it, or we started at twenty, we kinda ended at ten. There's already a sixteen thousand square foot building there. It's already there. Okay, so what happens, like we talked about, if that building ever got sold, if that, if that building ever got repurposed, it wouldn't even work into the zone it butts up to, which is NB. Because we have a ten thousand square foot max. So now we've got this church that could get repurposed as a daycare or something. It can't, even though daycare's a, a permitted use, it can't, because it's sixteen thousand square feet. So to rezone that out of R1, out of a church, what, you're gonna make it general business? Well, that, that doesn't make sense, because now we got the NB closer to heavy industrial than we got the GB. So we're trying to say, to prevent that future argument, fight, debate, whatever you wanna call it, if we met in the middle at a fifteen, that's close enough to sixteen, that that could be still brought into the NB if that day ever comes. That if the NB max is fifteen thousand square feet, not the twenty we originally wanted, but a fifteen, it's tough to say that fifteen shouldn't be there when sixteen's already there.
A completely different use, though.
And these uses are restricted in NB, though. Our, we're not GB, don't you know what I'm saying? So our, our uses are restricted as well.
But, but the, the building that sits there currently is a completely different use, as it sits, than anything that we'd be talking about.
Once or twice a week.
Yeah. So, and you're right, in that it would create a problem if the church decided, hey, we're no longer gonna operate, and we would like to sell the building for a different use, and the only people looking to buy it would not be another church. Then it does create an issue. What do you do with a sixteen thousand square foot building in a zone that doesn't accommodate a business?
And currently, in NB, house of worship is allowed.
Yes.
Okay, so I mean, yeah, but-
Yes. Um, most of our churches are not, I guess I'd have to think a little harder on this.
But what, so my, my, my point to that, Tim, is that if it got sold to another church, it couldn't even be. Because although it works based on the ten thousand square foot, now it doesn't work. So my point is, we're putting a restriction on something that is already out of restriction.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I see where you're coming at.
Non-conforming use.
We're trying, we're trying to protect the residential.
And we agree with that a hundred percent.
In residential, we allow structures well over ten thousand square-
Like a school.
Schools.
Yep, yep.
Churches.
Yep.
Utility buildings.
Utility buildings, um, government buildings.
Yes.
And so that's why, you know, when we say fifteen, obviously, those properties would, would butt up against each other.
But then, do you see where we're coming with, with the lot coverage rule then, at fifteen thousand square feet?
Oh, yes, sir, absolutely, a hundred percent.
Making the lot bigger.
Hundred percent.
And not utilizing the fifty square foot.
Hundred percent.
So, I guess in my opinion, maybe we, maybe we implement a number. We would have to come up with a number for lot coverage rule. And then although I didn't wanna have conditional uses in this district, maybe we do have a conditional use for anything over ten thousand square feet.
So in that comment there, Tim, so if it's a permitted use already-
The what?
I, I'm using it as an example. We, it's a permitted use already, but it's gonna be larger than ten.
Yep.
Their use is not a conditional use, but their size then becomes a conditional use? That-
Can we do that, Patrick?
I think the restrictions are already on us. The restrictions are already there through all the permitted uses. The setbacks have been increased. We've got all these restrictions to, to make it more neighborhood friendly, but we're, we're getting it so restricted that now when we sit with our development committee, they don't even, it's too restricted.
So if we implemented a lot coverage rule, but increase the square footage of the building? Now, I mean, there has to be a maximum somewhere. We can't just say, right, I, I don't think so. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I mean, we can't say that if you have this much square footage to work with, then you can just put in a forty thousand square foot.
No, and that's why we had said fifteen. When we first came to this group, we proposed twenty. And we ended up last meeting at ten. After further discussion with the other development crew and looking at, when they said, well, guys, why are we talking about ten? There's already a church there. We went down that rabbit hole already. But we kinda came up with fifteen as that compromise. But we kind of came up with 15 as that compromise number, as you're saying, Tim, that it would be capped at 15. Absolutely, we don't, this is not a place for a Walmart, this is not a place for a 30 or 40,000 square foot, but we agree 100% with that. And so we would be saying cap it, I agree, cap it, cap it at 15. And, and then once you throw in your setbacks, your parking, then that's gonna dictate the size of your, your lot anyway.
Yes.
Reverse engineering there, it's gonna.
You know, we, we put the setbacks in to try to control the size of structures based on buildings, but I, I would like, we've always not done a lot coverage, especially in residential, because we used to back in the day. It's easier just to control things with setbacks. But in this situation, I can see where if we implemented a lot coverage rule for anything over X square feet, that would provide a little more buffering, a little more. And, you know, like I said, we like a fine line between making something usable, developable, and, you know, and, and then not just allowing Walmarts to go up in the middle of neighborhoods. I mean, there, there's a, an interesting line to walk there somewhere. Because we do have unused land in the city of Brandon that can't just stay unused land forever. Sorry.
If you did, and this would maybe, if you did a building size max, would you still have to use a coverage percentage? Or could you just cap the building size?
I would still want the proof, I would still want the lot coverage rule in place.
Yep.
Because we would want to, we would want more than just the setbacks, I think.
I think, I think we need, I, we need to be cognizant of density.
Yes.
And just open space. I, I highly doubt these are gonna be, you might have a couple two-story structures, but if you're limiting the business, if we're limiting the, the business, the retail side of things on the first floor, probably not gonna have too many tall buildings.
No.
Other than, you know, maybe a pitch rough on it, but I don't, I, I don't see us really having too many two-story buildings. If they are two-story, they're gonna be very, very small, 15, 2,000 square feet. And with somebody living above it, so.
Okay.
As far as just open feel to it, I think that's, that's the right direction.
So my next question would be, does somebody have a number in mind for the lot coverage rule?
So would you just, if you had, the bigger the lot, the bigger the setbacks, would that do it?
What would be easier for you? Something in terms of lot coverage or like we do with, with, you know, our, our R3, our commercial, everything? The, the height of the building always, always dictates the setbacks, right? As it gets taller, we bring the setbacks farther from the property line, typically.
Yep, and that the institutional zone for the school setback becomes larger, the taller the building.
Yes.
So if, if we were to try to control green space by saying the bigger the lot, the bigger the setbacks, would that?
Well, so a lot coverage rule is different than a setback. Kind of, but. They could, whichever one would be easier for them to actually enforce, I think.
Couple of years ago, we had this conversation, and the scenario, the scenario was.
Sorry.
We allow, we allow schools in R1. Well, what if they put up the performing arts center right next to somebody's house?
Correct.
With the minimum setback.
I, I mean, they.
Kind of talked about the same scenario back then.
Yeah, I mean, the, the high school built the, the big addition that's literally right next to houses.
Right.
You know.
That's when we decided to make the setbacks farther, the taller it would go, yeah, I remember that.
But I don't, I don't see a lot of these being
No.
That tall.
And I'm not talking about height at all. I'm talking about the bigger the lot, the bigger the setback.
The bit, okay, yeah, the bigger the building, the bigger the setback, not the lot.
Well, I'm, what I'm saying is the bigger the lot, the bigger the setback. Is that an option? Instead of saying you can, if you have this big of a lot, you can, you can cover 50% of it, but if you have this big of a lot, you can only cover 30% of it. Well, if you have this big of a lot, you can only cover 20% of it. What if, if we just said if you have this big of a lot, you have X setback. If you have this big of a lot, you have 2X setback. If you have this big of a lot, you have 3X setback.
I mean, it's, it's accomplishing the same thing, but differently.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If we were.
Which is easier to.
That's up to them.
Yeah, what, what's easier to calculate?
From a staff standpoint, it's probably a lot. Either way you want to do it, if you want to do a combo, however you want to do it, we can make it work.
So what's easier to write?
And read and understand.
That is something that will probably get fleshed out as I try to write it.
Yeah, and I would think it would be one, one thing or a different thing would be easier to write and to understand later when you're reading it than a combo.
It seems to me that if you get over a certain square footage of building, it would be much easier just to say it has to be this percentage of lot coverage. Because otherwise, with every lot size, you'd have to set benchmarks to increase setback marks. Whereas you can just say anything over 10,000 square feet has to meet this number of lot coverage rule. A number that we haven't, nobody's thrown out the number that they would like, but something like that. Does that make sense? I think, I think that would make writing it, maybe enforcing it, maybe a little easier. I could be wrong, but I've never approved plans before. Yes, sir.
You probably answered. I was, I was going with you there, so I kind of like it, but I was already up here, so. What it also makes sense, or easier, I guess I should say, is if you just capped the lot size and building size, not a percent to just say it's 1.25 acres and 15,000 square foot max.
I would say that we would cover it with lot coverage rule, and we could cap the max building size.
And, yeah, that's just, whatever's easier, versus having to do math to just say 1.25 and 15,000.
But we run into, we run into like, right, where nobody builds anything with, with the same numbers. So if it's 12,000 square feet or it's like 11,000 square feet, then it would apply to the lot coverage rule.
Then you wouldn't want to have a 1.25 acre lot, is what you're saying. I got it. I understand. Got it.
I, I don't know if I would want to cap the max lot size.
Lot or building?
Lot size.
Well, I don't care about lot size. Building size I would like to cap.
Yes.
Yes.
But I, I would not want to cap the lot size.
No.
There might, there might be a, an occupancy that wants a larger lot, you know, than, than, than what they can build on, so I would, I would rather cap the building than the lot.
I would agree.
How about the number of buildings that can be on a lot?
One.
So you have a 10-acre plot?
One.
One?
One. Replant it.
So. So if, if we say, if we cap the, the lot size at whatever it is, just say one acre, which it wouldn't be, but just because it's easier to think about, one acre. So then, and you can have one acre, one building, and then you, right next to it, you have one acre, one building, and right next to it, now you have 10 acres, I'll just replant into 10, now I get 10 buildings.
Yep.
Why is that okay?
Well, they're gonna meet our setbacks, and they're not gonna be very large buildings if they're on one acre.
Yeah.
Just for comparison, like our, the way it's drafted now, that 10,000 square foot building, the max would take 20,000 square foot lot. And if, just throwing it out there, if it was 35% on a bigger building, then your one acre lot, 43,560 would accommodate a 15,246 square foot building at 35%. Just as, as an example.
Yeah.
A 14,000 square foot building would take a 40,000 square foot lot, almost an acre. So just to throw out a comparison, that, that acre would, would, would accommodate a 15,000 square foot building in that sense. And I do think too that, yeah, I think there still should be a maximum building size, even if we allow another tier, sort of.
The thing that keeps occurring in my mind is, is to connect to, when there's a bunch of adjoining ones. So I've got four lots here, or nine lots, like a tic-tac-toe. So I put my one building and then I put all my other buildings in the corner, so they're all clustered. So isn't that one of the things we're trying to avoid?
We are, but I think the draft would address, would address bigger setbacks on any of those sides that are but residential. And the business to business would be a little smaller, but that to me wouldn't be an issue, but if, if any of them butted directly to the residential, then it has to be bigger.
Yes.
And no zero setbacks?
Well, in Karen, Alicia, we do have.
Alyssa, but that's fine, that's okay.
Alicia, Alyssa, whatever.
We do have the, the common. Like a strip mall application where you have zero lot lines surrounded by common space. The way it's drafted right now, there is that option. But the combined area of all of those individual sublots and those buildings right now cannot exceed 10,000. I think right now the big question is what? What are we gonna limit it to? Is it 10? Is it 15?
I would take, so. I will, yeah. Everybody say a number they're comfortable with. I would say we allow 10,000 square foot building with a 50% lot coverage rule. Is that right? And anything over 10,000 square feet has to meet a lot coverage rule of, give me a percentage.
I would say 33.
33. Anybody have any, 30, wow, that's very specific. 33. About 35? How about 42?
But I, I think the example we talked about, that's gonna happen just by nature of what you're gonna be required for parking and setbacks.
A lot of that.
You can have a hard time getting a density over that.
Yes.
I would agree with that.
33?
The way that was just worded, yeah.
Anybody else? Rob?
What's 33 give you on a 1.5 acre lot then?
Only acres, only square feet in an acre again?
Oh, God.
Square feet.
43,560. 43,560?
Mm-hmm.
Times 1.5. 65,340 times 0.33. 21,562. Square feet. Did I do that right? Obviously, I, I messed up the math twice, I was a twice or three times earlier.
You notice I haven't pulled a calculator out once? On purpose?
So, and, so yours is 3.6? So if they did not divide that into smaller lots and just use their 3.66 lot, how big of a building would they be allowed under that?
Well, that's why we're trying to come up with a maximum square footage.
How big?
At 33%, it would be 52,612.
That's too big.
The 33% is too big of a percentage?
Hmm, no.
How big was that again?
It would be 52,611. Run it up to 12. On a one acre lot, it would be 14,375.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, the intention of this, Alyssa, is not to have anybody build a 52,000 square foot building. We have general business and, and heavy industrial for that kind of stuff. Right? So if they have three and a half acres that they've designated to be this neighborhood business, it's not gonna be to build one building at 52,000 square feet. I don't think so. Because we don't allow it.
But if we said if it's bigger than such big, if it's bigger than X?
Unless I'm not understanding you guys right, but if you're saying if your lot line is, if your lot is this big, it can only cover 50%, but if your lot is bigger than that, you can cover 33%. But then that would allow a 50,000 square.
No, it would not, because we would.
It would not come.
We would set a maximum square footage of the building size. If I had three and a half square feet, I would break it up into four lots. I wouldn't take one lot and build a 50,000 square, and there's places for that, not, not in neighborhood business.
And you know that the contractors, you knew, you know that the developers would do that? Because how?
We're, we're designing a brand new zoning, so we don't know anything.
I, my, I mean, my thoughts are we should leave the draft language as it is, as for what we have, and then say, consider saying 10,000, well, above 10,000 feet to whatever, 20,000 feet, then you can only have a maximum lot coverage of 30.
3%.
5%, 30%.
Yeah, you'd have to have a chart where the bigger the lot, the smaller.
Caps a building, so it caps a lot, basically, or I guess it still wouldn't prohibit someone from utilizing less than
Correct.
33%.
Yes.
They won't use less, yeah, all, all the power too.
You know, somewhere it came up, because I would have, I would have thought, I think it came up somewhere that, well, what if someone had a, we've got a, a soccer academy where they wanted to have a soccer thing, and they had, you can't have another accessory building, but if you had a building and then you wanted a field to have outdoor soccer training, would that be something that you wouldn't think of as a neighborhood business? I don't know. It's a different discussion, but even if we had something like this, you could still have a larger lot in a smaller building, and perhaps, I mean, perhaps that would work in a zone such as this. And that would be a great neighborhood use, in my opinion. I don't think we currently have addressed that, so that's a new thing, but I'm just talking about the building size. That would be a use for a larger lot with a
Correct.
Using less building space on that lot.
Okay. Chuck's sleeping. So I think, does that make sense, Patrick? Leave the language as is, except for anything over 10,000 square feet has to meet a lot coverage rule of 33%.
Yep, and right now I have language with, or a cap at 15. Is that the number we wanted to look at? Did we want to go more than that?
Yeah?
I'm thinking it, going from 10 to 15 would be okay.
15, okay. So we'd cap the building size at 15,000 square feet?
Yep, or the 33.
Or 33%, yep.
Yep. Correct.
Correct.
So you will have a new draft at the next meeting, and in the meantime, I encourage public comments. If you want to send them to me or stop by City Hall and discuss, we certainly can. We are interested in public feedback.
So if we make no changes the next time, then it will be ready for a public hearing?
If you all want it to go to public hearing, we certainly can.
Okay.
One thing that, I don't want to drag this up too long, but, you know, we allow, we allow restaurants in here. So the next question that's gonna come up if you have a restaurant is alcohol. So do we want to address that now? Or deal with that the same way we deal with any other?
Don't we handle it now by conditional use?
I believe so. In this, there is currently no language to have that be a conditional use. If that, if that's something you'd like to add.
If we did consider that, we can differentiate between liquor license and beer and wine, or whatever the terminology is, correct? I mean, they're malt beverage versus liquor license.
Is that something we want? Is that something we want to consider including as part of this? Because it is next to residential. You know, otherwise, what's going to happen? You're going to have outdoor dining, outdoor dining turns into outdoor drinking, um-
I think the neighbors have been clear, when they've come in, that they don't want any-
They don't want that.
They don't want any kind of alcohol at all.
But yet, those same neighbors will want to go to the the local gruff and have a drink with their dinner, so.
Personally, I, I think I may have said it before, personally, I, when I looked at these uses at the beginning, I thought no, I thought I didn't want liquor licenses to be included in this, but can, I would consider a malt liquor, because at least if you had a small restaurant, you could have a beer and wine for a guest.
And the city is, the, the city has a cap on how many how many liquor licenses they can, the city can issue. But malt beverage licenses are unlimited, we can, the city can, not we, but the city council, can issue as many of them as they want.
Well, yes.
Correct?
Yes, I believe so.
But, but hard liquor, full liquor, spirits-
Yeah.
There's, the state, the state regulates how many we can have, but based on our population.
Every census, it becomes more.
That's correct.
Yes.
Well, not, not automatically, but in our case, yeah.
Okay.
So, do we want to exclude liquor in this? Or allow malt beverages? Or not put any restriction on it?
It's up to you guys, what would you like to say?
I would be willing to go with malt.
By conditional use, which they have to be anyway, right? Like, we don't issue those without a conditional use hearing anyway.
Be beer and wine.
I'm the opposite, I don't.
Chuck wants liquor.
And then, and then-
Is that what you said?
I'm interested in the conditional use.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we, we, it is nice that it's done through conditional use, because we can always deny it.
I would just say that I like the compromises that we're doing, but if we ever find ourselves in this situation again, where there's a industrial park to the north, and you're on a truck route, you just leave it GB and be done with it.
Okay.
Well, we did, we did recommend to the city council that it be general business, and that's the stand on it right now. And city council just hasn't voted one way or another on it. So we could just, you know, I mean-
I'm not imploring that, Alyssa, I'm just saying, I like the compromises that we're doing, where if we find ourselves in another position, where there's an industrial park to the north, and you're on a truck route, and just leave it.
I mean, I think, I like that we're forming a, a neighborhood business district for the future.
I agree.
You know? But the, the city council vote on this particular parcel is still pending.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Okay, good. Oh, boy. Okay, fire away. Name an address, please.
Shawna Shippers, six oh one Tamarack. Um, so those fifteen thousand square foot, is that one business or multiple businesses?
It's a building size.
For the fifteen thousand square foot? Is that just one?
It's a building size.
Building size?
I mean, if they want to have, carve it up into several businesses, as they can.
Okay, so it could be like a strip mall?
Sure.
Okay, all right, and then, so, then I'm, I'm also reading here, um, maybe just kind of talk out this, um, on page forty here, it says something about a, a wind energy tower that can be fifty-five feet tall. Maybe if you can just kind of talk out, maybe the reasoning why that's, or what it is, what is it, you know, what is this fifty-five foot tall?
Patrick.
Wind tower.
Wind tower.
Just, just for clarification.
Yep, so, some places have wind towers and various alternative energy things attached to buildings. Generally, you don't see all that many around here, you probably more see solar panels than a wind tower, but currently, the standard in NRC R1, R2, R3, R4 is fifty-five, and in CBGB LIHI and IN, it is a hundred and fifty, should someone choose to do that. I put the fifty-five, I put the NB in the fifty-five, because I, given its proximity to residential, I figured, based on the rules we have in place, it, it should probably more match the residential than the other way. But those numbers of, much like anything in the zoning ordinance, are up for your consideration.
We spent three meetings redoing the wind ordinance in the city of Brandon for one house. And that, I think, has never been utilized ever since.
So somebody right now could put a fifty-foot one on their house, or at their house.
I think it's total height. We did limit the size of the tower, if I remember correctly, like this is the total height of the apparatus, so this would be on top of a roof. Yep. You guys good with leaving it in there, knowing that there's a solid chance that there will never be one? Okay. We good? Onto item number thirteen, gas station clarification. Brian? Is this you?
Oh.
Oh, man.
Is this, Patrick, is this the one that-
Yep, this is the one you brought up. At the last meeting, we decided to go with fifteen, so I tried to standardize the various things that are gas stations to be fifteen. In one place, motor vehicle service station was listed as a permitted use twice, so that X is out one of those, so that's kind of what that's designed to do.
Yeah, all this did was create consistency amongst all the different locations that showed up.
And we're good with this?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have to do anything else with this, or can you just change it?
Um, if you are fine with this, it would have to go through the process, but-
Sure, let's do it. Uh, onto item number fourteen, rezone notice, this is basically to send out a letter like we do conditional uses and variances, is that correct?
Correct, one thing to note on here, that the three hundred feet applies to in-city properties, so if you lived in the three hundred feet, but out in the county, you would not receive a notice.
Makes sense. Does everybody understand that one?
Yep.
That means that every rezone will also get allowed people in here like we do with conditional uses and variances, it's going to be awesome. Item number fifteen, Airbnb VRBO regulations.
So, we had someone get in touch with Paul about sending up a Airbnb Burbo, and after speaking with the city administrator, you know, we, we, we talked about it at length, and where you kind of find the, in the ordinance that I have, or in other places, where the line is, if it's used more than fifty percent of days, it's the principal use of the lot. If it's used less, it could be potentially an accessory, you say the family lives there, and they just Airbnb it when they're out. So, we talked about that, and the, the first question is, do you care to regulate them at all? Brian's suggestion was that they be treated as a home occupation, which would require them to get a conditional use permit. But then, that gets a little bit messy because of the home occupation rules regarding amount of the space utilized. So, how do we want to do that? Do we want to add those uses as
Ooh.
principal and then set accessory use rules for them? Or however we want to do that?
Isn't Sioux Falls starting to look at this now, too, with, I was told by, uh, Prazer, that they were looking at this now, to make them just in commercial areas only? Yep, too, I don't, I mean, it's not, they're just talking.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, but I'm just saying, Sioux Falls is talking about it, too. About where they should be allowed and stuff, if, if they can push it that way or not.
Wow.
Is an Airbnb and a bed and breakfast the same thing?
Uh-
Uh, in bed and breakfast, usually, the homeowner would provide meals and other things, where in Airbnb, you just kind of go and do your own thing.
You just use the property.
Yeah.
Do you have any examples of what other communities have done?
Yeah, I would, yeah, this is interesting.
The ones that I have wrote kind of function in the fifty percent above or down way, and I can provide that to you to take a look.
They say fifty percent is that over a year's time, or?
It is fifty percent of days in the year, however, that would divide in half, yeah, that's where the line would be. And at the state level, the Department of Health regu, or, they're supposed to regulate Airbnbs. They have certain rules, most of this comes out of the Black Hills, of course, where
Yes.
Those are quite numerous, where here, you probably have some, but seems like every other house on the Black Hills is a Airbnb at some point, so.
Yeah, the funny thing-
They're the source of most of the rules.
Yes, the Airbnb, the whole intention of the Airbnb was to rent a room to somebody traveling for cheap, and that's turned into people build properties specifically to rent, as Verbos or Airbnbs.
So, if you would all be interested in, we can write something and present it to you, and then we can hack it apart, if you care to regulate them at all.
Do you have any indication, like nationally, what they do with these, in other cities, other states, other areas?
Most bigger cities, I imagine, at this point, have regulations in terms of just occup, a lot of cities have occupants, I was down in Texas recently, and there, I, I was in Johnson City, that's LBJ's hometown. There, I think their thing is, you can have a maximum of seven or eight people, so they strictly regulate pretty much everything about it. But, and that's Texas. But-
You mean they regulate how many people can stay in the house?
They sure do.
Okay. But not how many days, or how many?
I, some of them, the, the state, I believe the state used this, used the term to describe them as short-term rentals. So you would define what your short, what's a short term?
So I guess another question, and when, when, I know that when we rent a hotel room, we get a, what, third penny sales tax out of that? When they secure a VRBO or Airbnb, do we get third penny sales tax, or do we get any sales tax?
Um, if they are properly registered with the state, potentially, if they're not, and the state doesn't, doesn't know about them, I don't imagine the state probably would get anything.
But if the state does, we, we should get the, the bed and booze tax out of it. My daughter rented a, she found through Airbnb a campsite, somebody just made little campsites in their backyard, and and so she rented that.
Uh, I, 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 yeah, if you want to write language, and we can debate over it, sure, but-
Airbnb does have sales tax on it.
Does?
We have three of them in Brandon.
How about VRBO, I assume is the same thing?
There's two in Brandon, so far, right now, and they do have ta, sales tax as well.
And they have to remit that to the state, just like any other business would? And is, is it considered third penny like a hotel room?
Fantastic.
Okay.
Kind of the, the question is, does the city care to regulate them, so we at least know where they are? Because I imagine neighbors may potentially have concerns if you have
Yeah.
A group of college guys showing up at, in your residential neighborhood, and they're there for, you know, a week, and there are ten guys, and
Yeah.
Yep, but-
I mean, I can see regulating the number of people that are allowed.
So, ten college guys, or, or, what, or like, uh, girls weekend, or?
Potentially.
I think there's a couple of things we could regulate, one is, how many people can stay in it? And number two, how often can it be rented out? Do we want to allow these rentals, where that's their primary use, that somebody doesn't live there, but maybe rent it out when they're down south for the winter?
I don't know.
Do we want, do we want to allow somebody to come in and build and/or buy properties with the sole purpose of renting them out? And so, if that's next door to you, every day you got strangers coming into the house, or every week you got strangers coming into the house next door to you?
I would, I don't know. I've rented them, and I, I, I've never, I don't know. It's interesting. I've never actually heard from people who live next to them to see if they complain about them. I mean, for the most part, if, they, they're expensive enough that you don't normally get the ten college kids that are getting drunk in them. But, and they can get kicked out for that as well.
And that might be a city council policy question, that if any city council members listen to the, the recording or YouTube and want to provide feedback, whether you care to regulate those things, you know, let us know, and we can look into it.
I'd never even thought about it, thank you.
It has come up, though, so we have been asked about it.
Yeah.
So it-
Huh. Okay. Next up, conditional use variance, rezone, home occupation permit applications, when to get information to convention members, what does this have to do with?
So, this, my understanding is this came up between a conversation with
It was me and Paul. I get phone calls every now and again, from people around the city, where there's a sign, or sometimes, and I don't even know that sign exists yet, because we don't see it until usually the Monday before. And I'm caught off guard sometimes about what they're even talking about, and they know about it before we do, if that makes sense.
That makes sense.
I don't know if we should be, I don't know if we should be told, I don't know when it would be if, once they come in for the variance or the, uh-
Once they make their application.
Once they make their application, and it gets sent out to the neighbors, do we get it at the same time?
That would make sense, actually, if you're going to send out notification to the neighbors, that maybe we should know about it as well.
Would you prefer a mailed notice, or can I just email it?
Email.
Email.
Okay.
But that, yeah, that would make sense. I've actually had those same phone calls. Hey, what are they doing here? I said, I don't know. I'll know, I will know, soon. Right.
I can-
I agree. Call me.
So, kind of a tangent topic, but earlier today, I sent out an email, there's somebody on behalf of the Redwood Apartment Development, that one of the brokers wanted to reach out to all you directly, he wanted your emails, they're not on the website, so I just didn't want to give them to him without talking to you all first, because I don't know if you want your, your private email out there, so some said it was okay, others said no, some haven't responded, so if you would let me know your preference, and the ones that do, I can pass along, but if you do not want to, I will not pass them along to him.
Don't all the city council people have city emails?
Yes.
A city email account?
Yep, that's why it's kind of different, if it's your personal email.
Yeah, or is it possible for planning zoning people to have a city email account?
That is something we'd have to probably talk about with-
We'll talk to the IT department.
But-
Or a, just a planning and zoning email account, wouldn't have to be for each individual person, but just, you know, one catch-all.
Yep, so, otherwise, I will give him the emails of the people that say yes, and if he sends stuff to me, then I will distribute it to the rest in private without that direct link. Just let me know your preference, and we'll get it taken care of.
Okay. Very good. Um, having no other agenda items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Jeez. Motions and seconds all around. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned at eight eighteen.
And for the people on the revolving loan fund, there's a pending resolution for this time regarding the mortgage sale.
Is it here?
It's in your email.
Okay.